Franklin County Board of County Commissioners, nine session. Commissioner Jones would you lead us in prayer and pledge, sir?
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, we thank you today for this day you've given us. Thank you for each and everyone that's here today. God pray that you be with us in our decision-making processes today. Help us to think clearly and understand, God, every situation, every circumstance we're looking at today. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, nineteen eighty-three, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and eternal.
Next on the agenda will be the approval of the minutes.
Sir, move.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mastin.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Burke. Any... All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass unanimously. Next on the agenda will be payments of county bills.
Sir, move.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mastin.
Say.
Second by Commissioner Parrish. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass unanimously. Public comment.
Good morning, Commissioners. Gordon Hunter from Friends of the Hapless Chemical Region Airport. Just want to report that we had a pancake breakfast flying at the airport this last Saturday. It was sponsored by our fixed base operator and supported by Friends of the Airport. And it was a good success. We had about fifteen aircraft come in. Of course, most of them had to refuel, so that brings income to the county. There were about fifty people that attended the breakfast, and the proceeds from that are going to go to a... I think the sheriff's has a children's Christmas gift fund or something like that. So we raised over three hundred dollars for that fund. So that was a good thing. And we hope to have these events take place at least quarterly, maybe bimonthly, bring in tourists. I know we had some people come in for the seafood festival, and the airport's a great gateway for that. So that was good, and it was an important thing. We're also going to form a chapter of the Experimental Aircraft Association. The benefits of that is they have a program called the Young Eagles Program, which gives free flights to youth. And we had that program go on when we had an airshow a couple years ago. And if we form a local chapter, we'll have local pilots that will give young youth an opportunity to get airplane rides and increase motivation. There's a real shortage of pilots throughout the country. Both the military and the airlines are looking for pilots. And so if we can enthuse the use of the area to become involved in aviation, that's a real plus. So anyway, we're working on it. We're trying to create some good vitality at the airport, and I think we're being successful. And I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Let me ask you a question.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
What age on that to start?
I think, if I recall, it's twelve through eighteen. Twelve through eighteen. And the last time we had this kind of a thing at our airshow, we had sixty-three youths went up for flights.
Okay.
That's a good number. Yeah.
When you get it started, how about get with Mike and so he can put it in the paper?
Good. Glad to do that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comments?
Go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name's Gary Darple, and I'm a resident of Alligator Point. And obviously, the road is a huge concern of everyone's, and I wanted to thank everybody for what they've done so far, working with everybody in our government. I know that can be a monumental task at some point. I want to offer any help that we can be, not only as residents, but further any type of communication, either be with the legislature, the senators, the representatives, whatever we can do by email or reaching out to anyone as a resident to make them aware of the situation there, as I know you all have already done. And Bert, thank you for your communication on that this morning. So that's basically all I have to say is thanks. We do appreciate it. It's not going unnoticed. And anything we can do as residents, please let us know. We'll be happy to step in and do anything we can do to help further this.
Y'all can get a list, all you people over there.
Yes, sir.
And let's send it to every state representative, senate, and everything. Tell them to take over that road. I mean, that for real.
We... Yeah, we've done that before, but it's my third attempt in gathering people up to send mass emailing out to everyone, and we'll continue to do that.
And Mr. Chairman, I concur with what you're saying, and just the voice, the same deal, that the more they hear that something has to be done on the residents down there, maybe, maybe a glacier will move, possibly. I don't know. DOT is a little more resistant than even a glacier, but maybe something.
We're still working on it.
Oh, I know, and we will help all we can to. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, good morning. I wanted to also inject... We're going to... "we" meaning Jason Schoeff and his staff and I are going to have a formal meeting with Department of Transportation with regard to considering taking over the road. One thought was that perhaps we can offer, to exchange, one of their state roads without a bridge here in the county, and we give them back that road. Now, again, this is all theory, but we're going to make that approach and see what their criteria might be to consider.
Public comment.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm Bruce Graham from East Point. I want to give you an update on Civil Air Patrol. We've found several seniors to participate, so it looks like we'll be standing up our unit sometime in the March-April timeframe of next year. We currently have about twelve cadets lined up, ages twelve to eighteen, and we'll have four seniors, one of which coming down from Michigan, who has already been a commanding officer, and a pilot instructor. So shortly thereafter, we'll be working with the wing to see about getting an aircraft at the airport so we can start actually doing training and flying and missions. In addition, I've had conversations with the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary about them starting up an aviation unit for the Coast Guard Auxiliary at the airport as well. And that will involve those people who own aircraft actually getting training and using the aircraft to support the auxiliary in search and rescue missions and other activities. So getting other units and opportunities involved at the airport, looks like it's coming along, and I think it'll be very helpful both from a safety, security effort for the local community. I'll keep you all informed as this moves on. Last thing I wanted to mention is the Veterans Day Celebration on St. George Island. It's at... On the eleventh, day of the eleventh month, at eleven o'clock. And I understand, Mr. Jones, you may have an opportunity to participate, and anyone else who can come and support the veterans' activities would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want on the CBD grant.
Let me get your name for that.
Paul Sadner from East Point. I'm a fire victim, Moberly. And I've been fighting Debbie Belcher ever since this fire, trying to get her home, Moberly, and every time she puts a different obstacle up in my way, telling me I got to do this and do that. I need somebody to step up and do something to her where she get me approved.
Okay.
And on that avenue, I didn't think... She says I can't put the sheriff's trailer. And now she's telling me I got to get rid of the sheriff's trailer before they can even consider me qualifying. That's wrong. And she's got some kind of prejudice against me, and something needs to be done about it.
Michael, get with him and... Get with Mike out of there sometime to think Michael Marone, he's our county coordinator, and we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. No more public comment. Next on the agenda will be Department Director's Report. Mr. Howard Neighbors, Superintendent of Public Works.
Good morning, Commissioners. How y'all doing?
Hey, how are you?
Got a couple items we can continue on, cutting grass and shoulder and road grading and stuff throughout the county. A few weeks ago, three weeks ago, we had a little storm that come through. You know, everything very good. We had a few trees down. Alligator Point had six hundred and eighty-eight foot, but a road washed out out of eleven hundred foot, so we got it back, you know, where people can't get in that their houses, so.
Mr. Chairman, Howard, I just wanted to publicly thank you for the work your crew did.
Okay.
I was aware, pre-storm, how you had staged equipment and materials and supplies.
Yes.
And then I believe Mitch was there that Saturday morning, first light.
Yes.
And then later, we all assembled and watched that storm fade away, and at the same time, I watched how you coordinated getting equipment in. And we even had an intra-agency borrowing of equipment, where we borrowed the Waste Management Department's excavator, and just as soon as the water receded, you were on top of it. And it... So we had, I guess, Saturday evening at supper time, we had one lane, and the next day, both lanes passable. And I just appreciate that coordination very much.
And the closer you got your equipment, your material, the quicker you can get it done.
Yeah, I saw that. Appreciate that very much, and thank you.
Let me just add on to that for two comments. One, I know Commissioner Bullock, we talked earlier about relocating some of the sands piles on the side of Alligator Drive to a less visible location, but this kind of storm is the example where you want to keep it as close to the action as possible.
Sure.
So I understand the Alligator Point community wants it better, but it just makes recovery faster. So until we have a permanent solution, we probably ought to leave it where it's at. Number one, number two, and Pam and I both will say this later on today, but since Howard's here, we'll say it now. That storm is our expense. There's no FEMA money, there's no state money. Whatever Howard spent down there was coming out of his budget and out of the taxpayers' pocket.
And you see, that's another emphasis for talking to the Department of Transportation about that term, what a good steward we are of that road. And this repetitive damage over damage, I think we've got so much history. This is another support.
Wow.
We'll work, you know? And we'll know, we know, if we even don't get a positive answer, we'll know we did it.
Right. I mean, everything's worth an effort, trying to see if we can get some movement there. I will say, and I just make this comment to you, everybody, that we put twenty-five thousand dollars of asphalt down there after Commissioner Bullock got elected, and it washed away. At this point, I don't recommend putting any more down there. We think we are creeping towards FEMA giving us approval, and I... So my recommendation right now is let's give another month or two, see if we can get some activity out of FEMA before we throw more asphalt down there, because now the road is so close to the ocean that even less than hurricane... Well, tropical storm, which is a minor tropical storm, so I just, at this point, I would say, let's don't try that again. Let's see if we can get the final solution.
Yep, you bet.
Well, our road department, they professional design, they'll go do business.
That's right, amen.
Flat twenty years.
Which it was about thirty-six thousand dollars, too, to what we did down there. But road back, material, labor, fuel, equipment.
About six thousand, you say?
Thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six thousand?
Yes, sir.
Is what it cost to restore the road following?
Yes, sir. That's counting the sand and all.
Yes, sir. Yeah, man, equipment, material, thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six thousand, yeah.
Wow.
They got to break on down, need a bridge. Need a bridge.
Yeah.
That's the only thing going to fix.
Yep.
All right. Good.
I got something for Howard, want to sit here if I can.
Okay.
So I believe it was the last meeting I brought up with Howard about seeing what we can do to have a five-day-a-week at his department, road department. Mr. Neighbors and I sat down and talked for quite a while. What I didn't understand, and I have no problem saying this, is how the state does with inmate labor. A lot of times, we don't know for sure how many we're getting, we just have to go after them. And they might get there, and they might give... We might send four guys, and one of them get one guy, another one get three guys, and another one get two. You know what I mean? You can't... You can't plan for what the state's going to give you, because you don't know until you get there. So with that in mind, we are doing the best we can do with it being a four-day work week, because I don't think it'd be prudent for us to try to give up inmate labor. I just want to make sure the board was aware of that conversation.
Which I have one inmate, one crew have one inmate this morning. You take that one inmate, either you leave him. And when, once you get the inmates out, you can't... Just say, I got one crew, got two or three. Once you sign for that inmate, you're responsible for him. You can't take them and put them on a different crew or go run equipment or do something like that. Once you get that one inmate, you have to keep him, you have to be over him, so.
You got to take him. If you don't, you won't get none the next day.
You won't get none, that's exactly right.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And he got to be on that special assignment, right?
Yes, sir. Once you sign for that inmate, you're responsible for that inmate. If that inmate goes to another crew or does something, whoever signed for that inmate is responsible for it, so.
That's good info.
Yeah.
Anybody else got something for Mr. Howard?
Yeah. Michael's got something right here.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Okay, number two in my report. Commissioner Masti received a request for the county to clear a portion of Messer Road in Lighthouse Estates, in the Lighthouse Estates area that would allow Messer Road to connect to Frank McCamey Way. In checking with Mark, your county planner, he states, and I quote, "From 2004 until 2006, the county commission discussed taking over the roads in the Lighthouse Estates area west of Carrabelle. On August 1st, 2006, the commission voted to accept the Lighthouse Point Estate roads as county roads. But at the very next meeting, the commission voted to abandon the same roads. On September 5th, 2006, the commission voted again to accept some roads as county roads. This time, the motion explicitly named the roads the county was accepting: Paradise Road, Lighthouse Road, and West Road. They did not mention accepting Messer Road. Based on this information and the overgrowth on the reference portion of the road, it is obvious that the county has not been maintaining this road in any manner, and it is a private road. In order for the county to do any maintenance on this road, county acceptance of this road will have to be considered. Allow Mr. Howard Neighbors thoughts on having adequate equipment to clear that portion of Messer Road." So, and in talking to Commissioner Masti this morning, he's saying, no, Michael, some of that was actually paved. So this is where... Okay, so I'm going to do a little thing here. So this is where I think we're talking about connection right there, roughly. Going to pop up here in a second. And I think Howard said there's some kind of cul-de-sac, like right there.
Yeah, Wes and Frank McCamey did it, and they got cul-de-sac. And I think that section of wood, you see, where you got the line.
Mm-hmm.
If that road goes all the way through, which I wasn't sure, which I told William, which is wood, right, it has to be cleared out and the road built, basically. I wasn't sure if that was county or...
So...
We got it paved our way to Messer Road to where you got the crook right there.
Yeah.
We paved it. We've been maintaining it. We mow it. He wants to come off Frank McCamey and just push about a hundred and fifty yards in there to get to their two acres of land.
About that way?
Yeah, they want to come off Frank McCamey, because you can't come off...
About that far there?
Yeah, about right in there.
What is it, oh... What you talking about, assets? He don't have assets to it now?
No, sir. They've got property right there where that arrow's at. And Frank McCamey's is paved. We paved it. We paved Messer Road, and they stopped right there where the wetland's at. They couldn't go no further, but down on the backside of it, they could come in, push as far as they can to where she can get to her two acres.
Is that... Is that part of private... I'm at the... It seem like a lawyer quit. What the deal is?
I just heard about this, probably like most of you did just a couple of minutes ago. I don't have an answer for you on the title question, because I haven't looked at the title. Based on what I can remember from the '04, '05, and '06 time period, none of those roads were dedicated to the public whenever the subdivisions were platted. Apparently, the county went in and was maintaining some portion of the roads within Lighthouse Ridge Estates and Lighthouse Point Estates, clearly since the road is unopened by the developer. It's not been opened by the county, it's not been maintained by the county, it's probably private property. But I would need to ask the board to table this. Let me do a title search and come back to the board just to make sure whether or not it's, you know, a public road that we can open up, or if it's private property that we can't. I just, I don't know the answer to that question right now, because I lack the information.
Well, let me ask you a question.
We got it paved our way, Messer Road. It's paved right there where the crook's at. They just couldn't go across the wetland.
No, we're talking about the wooded areas, what I'm referring to, Commissioner Masti.
Whoever built, back whenever they...
The developer built that road, paved that road, right?
No, the county paid it.
County paid it.
Mr. Bevan Putnell paved it. When he had the money in there, he paved all them roads, Mr. Bevan did. And Messer Road got paved, and Mr. Bevan paved it.
But the question that I'm hearing from the board is, the question is not, what do you do with the roads that are open and perhaps improved and maintained by the county? The question is, what about the wooded area that's never been opened? That's what I'm hearing the question to be. Clearly, as you can see, the developer never opened it up, so the county's never maintained it. The county's never opened it or maintained it. Now, whether or not it's ever been dedicated to the county in some fashion that I'm not aware of, I mean, I would need to go check the public records. My memory is that it has not been dedicated to the public, because I don't think any of those roads were. It was a private subdivision. The developer built some of the road system in there. The county, over a period of time, went in, as Commissioner Masti said, and was doing work on the road and improving it, and ultimately, you got so many people in there, and the county had been maintaining it, that the county took over and accepted the road system as they had been maintaining it. Now we're talking about creating something new. So I just, I need more information. I'm asking the board if y'all are interested in me coming back with a definitive set of facts and a recommendation. I would need you to table this, and let me come back at the next meeting and provide you with additional information.
I'll table it till you find out, because the road goes all the way through. I mean, they just stopped at the wetland right there, but at the time, I don't guess they could push through it. And sometime during that time, when the county went in and started paving and took it over, that's the reason it didn't get shoved all the way through. Every road over is paved except two. And the one coming off of ninety-eight by the lighthouse, it ain't paved, and one more of it is his county roads. They just hadn't been paved yet.
Yeah, I know the county was maintaining as dirt roads for quite some period of time, and then they went in and paved other portions of the road in there. So I don't think we're actually talking about the existing road network. I mean, what I'm hearing is, is that a dedicated piece of land that has otherwise not been improved, is not presently a road, and can we use public resources to turn it into a road? That's the question that I'm hearing. And I just need to go back and check the public record to see if there's been a dedication. As I sit here right now, based on, you know, experience and having been here at the time, I think it's probably private property, and we can't do anything with it. But I need to look at the record. I mean, there's a reason we don't go by memory, we go by written records.
Yeah.
Let me ask a question.
Yes, sir.
When, they said in the lot flat there, isn't it, ain't this the developer? Don't they pull the hair, them people, a road? Or do the county pull the...
The developer, under your subdivision ordinance, in order for a road to be taken over and accepted by the county as a public road, the developer has to first construct the road and build it to county road standards, whether it's a dirt road or it's a paved road. And then, once it is constructed to county standards, then we can accept it and maintain it at public expense. But no, it's not the county's responsibility to go in and build roads in an otherwise private subdivision. I mean, we just don't do that. At least not anymore. I mean, back in the day, fifty, sixty years ago, who knows what happened? But under your current subdivision ordinance, it has to be, the road has to be constructed to county standards, and then, once it is, has been constructed to that standard, you can accept the dedication.
So with that wetland, it going to have to go through DEP and all that, right?
Well, I just heard Commissioner Masti say there's actually a road on the ground that goes through there, so I need more information.
Right there where that crook's at, right there, the little horseshoe?
Right.
That's where it stops from Messer Road. On Frank McCamey Way, right there where the line's at, she owns two acres, right there, and she was just wanting it pushed through. You can't go all the way through, I don't think, counted the wetland. But we have paved up to Messer Road to that crook right there, and we paved Frank McCamey Road.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, again, I would just request that the board direct me to look into this and come back to the board with further information, and I'll get with Commissioner Masti between now and the next meeting. I mean, if there's a way to help, I mean, the county always wants to help.
I mean, if we don't own it, I understand, but we had paved up to that spot and stopped. It never got pushed through. And what they told me is when the county took it over, that's when they quit pushing. The county took the roads over.
Yeah, Commissioner, we took the roads over as if we're built.
That's correct.
There are no plats out there. This is an unplanted subdivision. That was initially, most of the lots were five-acre in size and therefore didn't need to have thicker roads. And then the owners, and I bet this is the case, the owner then initially bought a five-acre tract, and then has sold off one, two, or three acres and created these separate homesites. So that two-acre parcel was never created, probably wasn't even there when we accepted these roads, and now it's there. But it's, to me, it looks like it's essentially a driveway, a private driveway to a two-acre parcel. I mean, that's what I think it is, but, you know.
Well, most likely, as I said, based on, you know, my recollection of the time period from '04 to '06, the roads were private. The county went in at some point and began a process of maintaining them, eventually took over the ownership of the roads. But we're talking now about building a new road, which is a completely different question. And under your subdivision ordinance, we just, we don't build public roads with public resources on private property. But I would need to check the record just to confirm and make certain, in fact, there's not been a dedication that I'm not aware of. But most likely, we're not going to be able to help.
I want to... I like to help everybody, and you know, but I want to be careful on this one, because we got a whole lot of private...
That's correct. And number one, there's a bunch more waiting to get their turn.
And we own this gag in there.
That's correct.
Such as Buck Street in East Point?
Mm-hmm. And Patty Lane? Just to name a few. So I'll second table on this.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masti, and second by Commissioner Jones. We're going to table it until the lawyer gets the information to come back to us.
Amen.
Any more discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
That's the only thing I have.
Okay. I'm over here, but we got to...
Yeah, I just... Saying what the lady said. They paved all the roads in there night and day, ended up...
You know, got anything else, or... Mr. Neighbor? Anybody got anything else for Mr. Neighbor? Keep up the good work.
Yes, sir.
Y'all have a good one.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Fonda Davis, Summit Waste Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Yeah, I have this one item on my report this morning. I had moved Melissa West to the vacant administrative assistant position that was previously helped by Link Carroll. I would have asked that she be given the same fifteen hundred dollar increase that Link received when she was moved to that position from the scare house operator.
Pledge of the vote. Page to the board.
So didn't, don't we, and I do appreciate your insight, because you're right there to know this, didn't we have a conversation that we always keep salaries compartmentalized with the position? And we don't, I'm trying to think of the word, and we don't advance somebody to a higher position? We don't give a higher salary when we advance folks to different positions? I'm trying to think of how we did that. We talked about this a couple of weeks ago.
Commissioner, this would be a promotion.
It would be a promotion. So this is an actual lateral position, or is it, she's actually elevating? Is that correct?
Promotion.
Okay.
She moving up.
Okay. I see now. Just wanted to make sure I had that correct in my head.
Yeah. She was in the scare house, now she going in the office, I get?
Yes.
With more responsibility?
She was in the scare house, she coming in office with me.
Secretary?
Okay.
Administrator, secretary?
Yes, correct.
Okay, that's a move up.
So I did make a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Burke. All in favor?
Aye.
All in the floor? That pass unanimous.
I see, I notice on the agenda here, the bid opening for the roll-off truck, so I guess we're gonna open that today.
Y'all ready? Do we got a certain time to do that? If we can do it now?
You can open it now, Mr. Chairman. There was no stated time for opening, just a deadline for submission of the package monitoring that was received in timely fashion at the clerk's office yesterday afternoon.
Okay. Let's do it.
We have only one bid, it's from R E D K Truck Sales and Rental, used roll-off truck.
Okay. We can accept one bid and do it?
That's entirely up to the boards. Your policy on bidding these out does not have a minimum number for the requirement of the bids. Certainly, I know in the past, when we've received only one bid with other, like federal requirements, state requirements, they require us to have a minimum of three, and you have been required to rebid. But your local bid policy, which governs this, is silent on the issue on the number of bids, it just says that you have to bid it.
Own it up.
Okay.
Fonda, while you're doing that, what is a roll-off truck?
The roll-off is truck that carries boxes on the back. In our case, it would be our compacted box.
I see.
It's the one that was on its last leg, on the transfer station.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir. That was, that truck was given to us by Waste Management when they left.
It was by itself?
It was, it's shot, yes, sir.
And that truck was actually not roadworthy, correct?
That's correct.
Not roadworthy?
Yeah, it didn't actually physically leave the landfill because it wasn't.
I see.
Right.
Yeah, we need some, we got to do what we got.
Excuse me, just the title of it, just one. Maybe one in front.
Right, yeah.
Maybe they just giving to it.
Yeah. They know we had a bad, don't?
Price, which I'm gonna read to be the price they're selling, thirty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars.
Thirty-nine, fine. You got it in your budget?
Oh.
It is in the tipping fees budget.
Okay.
We did anticipate Fonda to replace that truck during our budget proceedings, so that was, that was something that he gotta pay for the landfill for the transfer station.
All right, so, got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massey.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All in the floor? Go get your roll-off.
Okay, appreciate it.
And Fonda, just for the board too, do you happen to know what's the price of a new truck? What a new roll-off truck would cost versus purchasing a new?
A new truck would be like a hundred and twenty-five thousand or better.
We ain't gonna be able to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate it. Yeah, I'm sure this truck is a lot better than what we have.
Yeah, that'll get, that'll keep you going. You certified with that, that truck did it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, anybody?
That's it.
Anybody got anything else for Mr. Davis? Keep up the good work.
All right.
Okay, next on the agenda will be Ms. Pam Bania, Emergency Management Division.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have two action items this morning. The first one is the approval and signing of the grant for planning and design of the new E O C in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars.
Page to the board.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Massey. All in favor?
Aye.
All in the floor? That pass unanimous.
Let me just interject it for the record. Basically, this is, this is our share of that one point eight million dollars that State of Florida gave D E M for nine counties to receive money for plan and design. So we didn't know, we sort of expected it to be an equal share, but a couple of months ago, we weren't sure of that. Well, in fact, it is. So all nine counties got the same amount of money from the state.
So where, where, Mr. Chairman? Where does it go from here? I mean, do we, you gonna bid out somebody to design and do all this stuff?
Yes, sir. It has to, it has to go through the R F P process.
Okay.
In order to follow the guidelines.
The state guidelines?
State and federal.
Federal.
Mm-hmm.
How much money did they get, we get out of that?
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand.
Okay.
When are we gonna get it, do you know?
I'm surprised.
It's a reimbursement. It's just like any other grant, we get through the state. We spend the money, we do a quarterly report, whatever we spent in that quarter, they send us a check for it.
You know, I'm surprised they gave it, they usually give it to the big boy.
Well, guess what? All the big boys already got it, and we're the only ones left.
Oh, really?
Those nine counties, the last nine counties, not necessarily the entire State of Florida, but certainly rural nine counties, to get any help from the state. As Pam knows only too well, this is the fifteenth year we've been trying to get money for a new E O C, and finally we get two hundred thousand dollars for design. Now, I swear with two hundred thousand, it isn't gonna build your building.
Right.
So, you know, now the question is, where's the construction money coming from? It's possible the legislature has already thought through that, and it's possible that maybe this coming session, they'll allocate money to D E M for construction. We don't know that. We have no idea. We have set aside some money in our consortium, a million dollars, that eventually become available. We're gonna do the dredging first, and then we have a million dollars for construction. So, so the county has construction money if we don't get it somewhere else.
Okay, but you know, they should, because we the last one on the waterfront, on the coast, don't have one.
I believe we are the last coastal county in State of Florida to get it.
Right. I mean, that's where they hit first.
Yeah, and everybody else got their grants in September. I had to call and ask for ours.
Really? Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Pam, does this design component assume that we're gonna put the building back where it currently is? I know we, oftentimes, when you design a building, you want to consider the topography of the land in which the building would be located. Are we just looking at basically a generic design right now, and we put it somewhere later?
No, sir. We have to decide, because when you start your plans, you've got to have your site, decide where the board's gonna put it. But first, we've got to get signatures and the state sign off on it, and then we, we can't do anything until that is actually executed.
Where would you assume we put the new building?
Where we tell it?
Say again?
Where we tell it, right?
There are several options, and we will bring the.
We'll just study that, okay.
Ultimately, the young decision will be on place.
Okay.
That's fine, that was my question. About that.
Same time.
Okay.
Hey, Commissioners, I want to let you know, I don't, I won't read it right now, but out of one of my reports, I went ahead and submitted construction, a request for construction money as a legislative appropriations for the upcoming year.
So we need to nail down where we're gonna put it, then?
Yeah, yeah, but I just want to let you guys know, Pam got the design money, so we're gonna need to fight for the construction money, okay?
That's good. That's good. We asked everybody, I mean, they came to them. If they helped, they helped. If they don't, we act.
Still got your plans, so once you have those plans, then any time that a funding source comes available, you can always apply for that. Um, are they done voting? Okay. Uh, second item is signing of the retroactive L S E for Tropical Storm Nester on ten eighteen of twenty nineteen at seven fourteen P M. Again, we did not get declared, so again, that taps on us, but just a local state of emergency, it's something we, we asked the board to do, put in place, in case we were get, to get declared, then we have a leg to stand on as far as being saying that. We knew that it was gonna be worse than what we could handle.
So moved.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massey, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All in the floor? That pass unanimous.
That's it for me?
Mr. Chairman, one more point.
Yeah, just one minute. Ms. Bania, I wanna thank y'all for going out early to help the sheriff look for the lady.
Well, we heard this weekend, we will be getting our S E R T grant, so we will have it in hand, coming hopefully in the next couple of months. It was the first time that we've ever had to activate our S E R T for a wide area search. In that, we realized that, mm, we need to refresh our training, so we will be looking for an instructor to come in and do that, and we will open that up to anyone in the county that would like to participate in that.
Yeah, that's good. That's a good thing, show that the county is participating and looking out for, appreciate that. Go ahead, Mr.
I just wanted to emphasize, Mr. Chairman, what you did. Pam, I just learned that you have a search and find component of the Emergency Management Division, and that was an education for me, and I'm glad to know that. Something else, too, that might amend and help you, I learned yesterday, had an Alzheimer's fundraiser, that there is a scent detection kit available now that allows bloodhounds to find the lost people. If you see something out there, say something or do something about people that are beginning to deteriorate in their overall faculties, there is a scent detection kit now, where you can actually swab the body of an individual that you're concerned about might go away, and it's put into a sealed jar that you create, that you actually have there as part of the kit, and that scent detection has a lifetime of ten years, and a bloodhound can use that to go find somebody. And this was, of course, an example retrospectively of what we could have done with that lady. So the sheriff has that sample right now, and if you need to, any more information, I'll be glad to help you with it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. They actually brought, the sheriff had a scent dog brought out.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that may have been that dog in that group, yeah.
We want to thank the sheriff department, too, although, everybody, I want to thank everybody who's involved, and make sure they get the word we do. Michael. Anybody got anything else for Ms. Bania? Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you, Pam.
Good job.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Eric Lowstrake.
Eric sent me an email, he wouldn't be here today, setting up for something, I think up in Tallahassee, maybe, I'm not sure. So he was attending a meeting on behalf of I V U S.
Okay. Next on the agenda will be Ms. Nikki Schaper.
Yes, sir. Good morning, gentlemen. I'm Nicole Cheppy with Weems.
Give me your name for the record.
Nicole Cheppy with Weems.
Mm-hmm.
I am here to request an action on October twenty-ninth. The Weems Hospital Board approved the recommended removal of obsolete and broken equipment from the hospital's asset management list. We are seeking final approval from the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners to remove these identified items and donate them, select items to a five oh one C three as previously completed last month.
Okay, y'all gonna, what, you gonna sell them?
No, sir. Donation.
Gonna donate them?
Donation, yes.
So moved.
Page to the board. Okay, I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All in the floor? That pass unanimous.
Thank you. Just an update regarding the roof. The demolition was complete as of Sunday, and the temporary roof is on, and we're putting the permanent roof on, and everything is on target at the moment.
Okay, you know what, when they'll be completed? What target date they got?
Target date is still early December to move back into the hospital.
Okay, we'll be on track, man.
Yes, sir. As for new construction, a note, informational note, is the A C A Stand Up Review, Stage Two, is now on November eighteenth. So it's been moved up a little bit, as well as we have completed two project requests for grants, one for ten thousand and one for eight thousand. So hopefully, we'll be awarded one of those as well.
Good morning, Commissioner. Richard Lewis, E M S Director.
Good morning.
We are looking at a State of Florida E M S grant, the annual grant that we get from the state. This year, it is eight hundred and forty-three dollars, and we're looking to use it for education opportunities for our staff, and I'm asking for action to approve and authorize a chairman's signature for the resolution of this grant.
Page to the board.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All in the floor? That pass unanimous.
Thanks, sir. Update on other E M S stuff, on October twenty-eighth, we moved into the station here in Annapolis, so we now have a twenty-four hour A L S truck to respond in Annapolis. And also, in November, by November eighteenth, we're expecting the new ambulance to be in the county. Hopefully, a week or so after that, we'll have it in service responding, and it will be located here in Annapolis for the crew.
That'll be, what kind that'll be?
It'll be like the newer ambulances we have. It'll be.
A L S.
Yes, A L S.
B L, okay, A L S, okay.
It'll be replacing the old truck we have over here.
Good, that's good.
And if you guys wanna check out the station, feel free to stop by anytime.
It's more convenient for y'all, huh?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, hey, folks, just a minute.
Just come back up, please.
You know, in my district is Landark Village, and last night, there was a well-attended, I would say at least thirty to forty people were at Landark Village, and one of the issues was the decommissioning of the Landark Village residents for E M T services. And these folks did an excellent job in describing and explaining that situation to the people at Landark Village. The living environment is not up to standards, and so we're gonna be temporarily relocating over there by Airport Road in Carabelle, as we plan and direct a new location permanent for D E M S services. And I just appreciated operations and Louis there, just taking, taking charge and talking with the people there. One resident came up and hugged Louis publicly right there last night, which was very special. And to me, it's just that opportunity to just educate the people, and it just meant a lot, and I appreciate both you guys. Just want to let you know that, and we'll keep you posted on how things go there.
Education's the best thing in the world, eh? Let them know what we doing.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Y'all keep up the good work. Next on the agenda will be Mr. Billy Fontana?
Fuentes.
Fontana, sorry about that. East Point Water and Sewer District.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Billy Fuentes with East Point Water and Sewer. I come before you requesting a letter of support. The East Point Water and Sewer District has been working with the last few years with Senator Monfort, Halsey Beshear before, and now Representative Chauvin, as well as a lobbyist, to amend our charter. Our charter was supposed to have been amended in nineteen eighty-nine to reflect certain things that the state requires. We are in that process now, but one of the things that we are trying to do is also expand our district boundaries. Currently, I'm gonna hand this map, and you can see the areas in paint are areas that we currently service that are considered the district boundaries. You will see, I'm sorry.
You only have four, you have more?
I'm sorry, I'm five, I apologize. You're going to see an area that's in red, which are areas that we already service, but are outside of our district boundaries. And so those areas are charged a surcharge on their water and sewer usage. Now, the areas of ridge and wilderness are literally split, where those people who are obviously the fire victims and in our district are the highest concentration of poverty, pay a higher surcharge than anyone else. Our goal is to reduce that surcharge, to go away by bringing them into the district. The same thing with areas like C C Land Road, matter of fact, the Franklin County Jail, the landfill, the Humane Society, all those areas pay a surcharge, and we service them. In recent years, special districts have gotten into legal issues with areas outside of their district. There has been some court cases about bringing service areas, and since these are areas that we already service, we need to bring them into the district and make them part of our boundaries. Representative Chauvin and Senator Monfort have both listened to us, they've talked to our lobbyists, but definitely would like a letter of support from the county stating that, you know, you're on board with us making this process. Now, even with the letter of support, it will still need to go to the legislature. Once the provision is in the legislature, it has to go to a referendum, so the people of the area that we are trying to bring in will ultimately vote to decide whether they want to be part of the district or not. So it's a, it's a large process, but the main step is to make you aware of our situation So it's a, it's a large process, but the main step is to make you aware of our situation and, and just kinda get support and, and an understanding of it.
Let me ask you a question. Don't y'all, do y'all got a target area there where you, well, like a low income, where you, that'll help to get grants?
Yeah, we, we were trying to, um, we were looking at a way to do workforce housing.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Um, up Highway sixty-five, the district currently owns forty-five acres. That was supposed to be eventually a spray field, but when we redesigned our plant, that kinda is no longer needed. So we have a surplus of land. Commissioner Jones and several of my board members had talked about figuring out a way to use that to do workforce housing. We also thought that five acre, five acres of that land could be set aside for, uh, an emergency, um, facility. Not necessarily a hospital, but something, you know, to help out. Uh, and also, that is outside of the district. So one of the big issues we face is, any time that we have to do financing, because we are a small independent district, you know, we usually have to go with a grant or a loan, and we need to have a, a match. So oftentimes, getting financing for areas outside of the district can be a, a little tricky sometimes. But for the most part, our, our goal and desire is to bring these areas in, get rid of that surcharge, which will allow us also to, you know, provide lower services, or lower price services, and not have to really affect those customers so much.
And y'all can, y'all got the capacity to take it on?
Yes, sir, we do. Our plant is, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day, and we're right around currently a hundred and, a hundred and twenty thousand on high rain days, but typically, it runs about a hundred and nine, hundred and eleven. So we're operating at, at less than probably thirty-five percent. And we recently completed, if you recall, with your assistance and with the C D B G grant project, we were able to put in new sewer infrastructure and build two new lift stations and a new water plant. And our two stations are operating at about twenty percent capacity. They have way, way more capacity than what we had before. Our new well, um, as a matter of fact, during the East Point Fire, we pumped fifteen hundred gallons per minute for eight hours straight, feeding a hundred fire trucks, and, and never missed a beat. So our, our system is, is well-tested. We actually completed a secondary well in twenty sixteen. That one will also pump around, uh, a thousand gallons per minute in an emergency, and it will feed the system when we have to do maintenance on the larger well, so.
Okay. Plagiate the vote.
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masser?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones.
And just so the record is clear with the, the motions for the letter of support, correct?
Yes, sir.
That's all you need from me?
Yes, sir, that's all I need, is a letter of support.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They pass unanimous.
Thank you.
Good work.
Take five.